Mayor Bill de Blasio. Before we begin, I'd like to invite up Michael Wine to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. I'd like to thank our host this evening, MS 217, Principal Patrick Burns. Principal Burns. And our co-sponsors, the Briarwood Community Association, Fresh Meadows Homeowner Civic Association, the Greater Jamaica Development Corporation, Jamaica Estates Association, the Kew Garden Hill Civic Association, Palmonock Residents Association, and the Queens Jewish Community Council. So I'd like to invite up your borough president, Melinda Katz, to give some brief greetings. Borough President Katz.
Listen, he's not running for borough president. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Good evening. I was just laughing with the staff here that the mayor is in Queens so much, I'm starting to worry that he wants to be borough president of this great borough. We want to thank First Councilman Rory Lanzman for the great work that he does and the great team that we have in this community. With our community board, of course, Martha Taylor, her community board aide, and the elected officials that you will hear from in a moment, Assemblyman Webber, our new Assemblyman, Rosenthal. And Assemblywoman Alicia Hyman. But we want to welcome Mayor de Blasio, Assemblywoman Alicia. We are an amazing community here in Board Eight and Twelve, Thirteen, and from wherever you are here tonight. Mayor de Blasio has been doing town hall meetings all across the borough of Queens. It is amazing how tough the questions are. It's amazing how we are getting answers at every one of these town hall meetings. And in the meantime, he is learning, and his great commissioners that are here tonight are learning about the issues that we care deeply about. But understand, you know Rory and I do a lot of work together in funding a lot of the playgrounds and the schools. We can't do it without the great cooperation of the administration. And so I want to thank him for the schools. I want to thank him for four-year-old pre-K citywide. No other administration has done it, he did it. We're getting three K, three-year-old pre-K in the city of New York. It is truly amazing. Our economy's at an all-time high or low, I guess. Unemployment's at an all-time high, unemployment's at a low. And so we are excited about the progress that we've made in the last four years. But there's a lot more work to do. You know, the mayor, myself, Rory, the elected officials have done a lot over the last four years. We've redone the Queens library system, which I'm extremely excited about. We have a representative here, John Ottwich, of the Board of Trustees. There is four-year pre-K. The infrastructure for the borough of Queens has had a $2 billion influx here in our borough, and we have more work to do. And so the mayor is doing many more town hall meetings before December 31st in order to hear what we can do to make this city better. And so we want to thank him here. We want to make sure that he is welcomed with tough and difficult questions. Tell him what he did wrong, but tell him what he did right as well. And Mr. Mayor, as always, we welcome you to our great borough and thank you for your involvement here.
Thank you, Borough President Katz. Now, next up, I'd like to invite your Assemblymember, David Webber.
Thank you, Marco, and thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for coming once more to our community. As you look around the community, you can see one of the most diverse communities in the country, right here in this part of Queens. More than 50% of my constituents are first generation, born in other countries. More than 50%. And Mayor de Blasio has been a champion for that diversity in fighting, not only here in the city, but really nationally, against some of the opposition that's been coming out of Washington, that is not as immigrant-friendly as we would like to see it. So I want to personally thank you, Mr. Mayor, publicly, for your fight, not only locally and in the city, and with these great commissioners here who have had many, many dealings with the positive results, but what you're doing nationally on behalf of New York City immigrants, and immigrants across the country, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Assemblymember Webber. And I'd like to bring up your state senator, Alicia Hyman. Sorry, you're a Assemblymember, Alicia Hyman, I'm sorry. I'll give you a promotion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia Hyman, Assemblywoman of the 29th Assembly District. I proudly represent the communities of Rosedale, Waltons, Weefield Gardens, Atletis, Parks, and Albans, Jamaica, and Palace. And I want to thank the mayor and our councilman Rory Lanzman for the tremendous work that happens in the borough of Queens. Now, we have this same teamwork, makes the dream work, and it does. It takes elected officials and community members to make this community and this city and the state great. And not only to the commissioners, but to the staff of the commissioners who do the excellent job of making sure the calls are returned and the work is done. Thank you very much. And that's my 30 seconds, right?
Assemblymember Hyman. And with that, I'd like to bring up, this time, your state senator Leroy Comrie.
Good timing, huh? Good evening, everyone. I just got here, so I'm a little out of breath, but I'm excited to be here today to share with you our mayor, who was just re-elected. This is a great environment for you to share with him, so he can find out your passion for the community. We're led by a great elected official, Rory Lanzman, who is here this evening. This is his district. I'm honored to share Briarwood with him, and also with Karen Cosworth, David Webber, and Alicia Hyman, and the newly-elected councilmember, Assemblymember Daniel Rosenthal. I got it. I'm out of breath, I'm working on it. Stalling for time, so we'll see. But yes, we bounce around, but we work together well, and I'm here to just congratulate all of you for being here this evening. You've taken time out of your schedules to come up to 217, which is one of the hardest places to park in Queens. But this is a great school. It's led by a great educational team. The principal here deserves a round of applause for everything that he's doing. And I look forward to hearing from you, your concerns and issues as well. I want to tell you that Mayor de Blasio is someone that loves these types of forums. I don't get it. He'll stay here with you until the end. You will see how engaging he is one-on-one, how he loves to talk about this city and the issues of this city, and he is passionate about trying to be responsive. He's not the person that the media puts him out to be. He's a person that truly cares about this city, and he will demonstrate that to you this evening. So again, thank you all for being here. As I look around, I see many people, there are community activists, there are parents, there are businesspeople, and all of you care about this city. So thank you. Thank all of his, to the mayor's staff, for being here as well. And I almost broke my breath when I'm going to get off the mic, because I think I've taken too much. I'm going to get back to someone during this evening. Thank you very much.
Good call.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Rosenthal. I am the new Assemblymember for this part of our Hills and all College Point, the part of Weston. Really want to thank the mayor for coming out here. I think it's great that he's coming out here to each community and listening to each community's individual complaints. I want to thank Councilmember Lanzman for arranging this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Rosenthal. And I'd like to bring up your councilmember and this evening's host, Rory Lanzman.
Good evening, everyone. I feel like I'm entering a boxing ring, the way that Marco does, or a circus, one of the other. But it's not going to be either of those tonight. Tonight, we're here for an informative, respectful conversation with our mayor. And I am so proud, Mr. Mayor, to, I will say, introduce you to this community, but you're the mayor for the whole city, and you know this community very well already. It is an extraordinary community, 150,000-plus people, a dozen-so different, distinct neighborhoods, full of, as David Webber said, the extraordinary diversity that we love and appreciate here in New York City, and diversity in many ways. Yes, we have people from every corner of the globe here in this district, but diversity in, we have homeowners, and we have renters, and we have people living co-ops, and we have people who are fortunate enough to be doing very well, and we have people who are struggling with the affordability crisis that you talk about so often. We have kids in public schools, and we have kids in private schools. And we asked you when you wanted to come to a community within the 24th Council District, we wanted you to come to Briarwood, because we think Briarwood, I love all my communities, but we think Briarwood especially represents the 24th Council District and the wonderful city of New York. So, everyone, you're not here to hear me make a speech, you're here to hear from our mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of the city of New York, Bill de Blasio.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I want to begin with the most important thing, which is to thank all of you. I want to echo the point that Senator Comrie made. This is a really great example of what democracy is supposed to be. You are here after a busy day. You're here because you care about your community, you love your community, you care enough to be involved, and you're bringing your concerns forward. It makes a huge difference to me to hear directly, to all my commissioners to hear directly from you. So I want to thank you, and I want to ask you, because this is such a great example of democracy actually working, please applaud your neighbor for being here tonight. Now, I want to first thank the elected officials who are hearing the talk about your councilman in just a minute, but I want to thank the other elected officials who have been here already speaking this evening. First of all, the borough president, where did she go? Borough President, you always move around a lot, Borough President. Okay, good, that's very good. I have to say that I would be wrong to say I regret that I gave Melinda Katz my email address and my cellphone number. That would be too strong. I would say Melinda Katz uses my cellphone number and my email address quite frequently to make sure I hear exactly what is needed for the people of Queens. And she is an aggressive advocate for Queens, and she's a highly informed and substantive advocate, and she often gets her way. I think that's a great job description for a borough president. Let's thank Melinda for all she does. A lot of the folks I had the honor of serving in the city council with are here. My good friend Leroy Comrie, thank you for all you do fighting for us in Albany. Very much appreciate it for everyone in the city. Assemblymember David Webber, thank you for everything you do and the leadership position you hold in Albany means a lot to us. Thank you so much. Of course, Assemblymember Alicia Hyman, we have worked closely together, particularly on our shared love, which is education. And thank you for being a great advocate for our kids. Assemblymember Daniel Rosenthal, congratulations. I want to tell you, as you now become a member, as you've become a member of the Assembly, it recalls the slogan they used to use from the military, "It's not a job, it's an adventure." So you're going to have a great time, but thank you for representing the community and fighting for us in Albany, and welcome aboard. Let's give him a round of applause. And I saw another dear friend, also colleague, from my city council today, Jim Janaro. Where are you? Thank you, Jim, for all you've done for this community. Feel like it's reunion here tonight. Feel young again, guys. So I also want to note, again, I want to talk about your councilmember and all he does, but a special side light over here, I want to thank the members of my team, my administration, who are here, and I want to just tell you something important about it. But first, I want to say we are blessed to have the greatest police force anywhere in the country. Let's thank the leadership of the NYPD who are here. And these great leaders of the different agencies of the city government. It is a very rare thing, if you're a community advocate, a community activist, a community board member, it's a very rare thing to have a whole lot of the different leaders of the city agency all in one room. So I want to urge you this evening, whatever issues you raise in the town hall, we're going to go to about 10 o'clock. I want to tell you that in advance. We're going to go to about 10 o'clock, so we're going to try and get to as many people as possible. Rory Lanzman is a strong and just moderator, so he's going to try and get as many people in as possible. But if we get to 10 o'clock and you have not had your issue raised yet, there's like a bonus opportunity to come over and talk to any of these commissioners you want to. So they're available, they're here, they want to hear from you now. A lot of people, I've done 45 town hall meetings, and I know what most people's minds, when I say, you know, you can come over, talk to the commissioners, at the end, they think, oh, these guys have had a long day, they've been working so hard, they must be tired. You don't have to worry about that, because they're such dedicated public servants, they will stay here all night if you want them to. Try it out. Just try it out. No, they never clap. They never clap. Forty-five times I've said it, they have not clapped once. But I tried. Everyone, I want to say about Councilmember Rory Lanzman, this is a hard-working guy. When he cares about issue, he's a dog of the bone. He is focused, he is energetic, he is substantive, and goes the way he believes in. Now, Rory Lanzman and I agree on absolutely everything? No. We agree on a lot of things, though, but much more importantly, I admire that he works really hard for this community, and he works really hard as a legislator as well. And when he cares about issue, he goes and makes a big impact on it. So you should be very proud to have such a focused and committed city council member representing you in the city hall. Let's thank Rory for all he does. What I want to do is just give you a couple of very, very quick updates, and then we're going to open it up. And I just want to touch upon some of the most important issues, but very quick and really looking at what it means here in the communities the councilmember represents. So I'd like to give credit where credit is due. You know, all of us who are elected to office, of course, we like to talk about the things that we have achieved, but it's also important to talk about what other people achieved or helped us to do. The city council led the way a couple of years back in the decision to put more police officers on our streets. We now have 2,000 more officers on patrol than we had two years ago. That has helped in many ways. It has helped us to strengthen our anti-crime efforts, it has helped us to adopt neighborhood policing as a strategy to bring police and community closer together while reducing crime. It has helped us to develop strong anti-terrorism capacity. There's a lot of great things that have happened because we had those additional officers. What does it mean right here in this council district? Well, it's a simple but powerful fact. This point this year compared to this point last year, crime is down in every precinct in Councilman Lanzman's council district. Every single precinct. And here in the 107, I'm very proud to say, and a lot of people here remember New York City 20 or 30 years ago. If you remember New York City 20 or 30 years ago, raise your hand, okay? Got a lot of memory here in the room. So you will be pleased when I tell you this fact about the 107 precinct. This day, it's the very end of November, it's been 11 full months, there's not been a single homicide all year in this precinct. And another powerful fact, last year, last year, there were five shootings in the whole precinct for the whole year. Now, one shooting is one too many, but for the whole precinct, the whole year, there were five. This year, there's only been two. Isn't that outstanding? Let's thank all the men and women of the 107. Now, I want to make a quick note on education. I appreciate it very much. What the borough president said about pre-K and 3K has been a particular passion of mine to achieve this for the city. It started with my own children, Kiara and Dante, when I saw what pre-K did for them. I fundamentally believed every child deserved it, and then I realized we should go farther with 3K. But let me tell you something, and I think the councilmember will like this a lot. So I've done 45 town hall meetings, and at each one, I talk about how much more pre-K there is today than there was four years ago. In a lot of places, it's doubled, in a lot of places, it's tripled. Councilmember, four years ago, there were 341 pre-K seats in your district. There are now 3,243 full-day pre-K seats in your district. That is almost 10 times as many pre-K seats as just four years ago. Score. Okay? You did good. And as we said, as the borough president said, 3K will be citywide. We've got a lot of work to do. Let me do the disclaimer we got off. Whole lot of work to do, we've got to put the resources together, we need help in Albany. But 3K will be citywide by September 2021. That's going to be a whole new day for the city. Also, a big thing that's not well enough known, I want to do a little poll of the room, a little survey. Tell me, everyone, tell me the honest truth, if you know this or if you don't know it. If you know that every middle school kid in New York City gets after-school for free, and there's a seat for everyone, raise your hand if you knew that already. Very informed crowd, you're better than a lot of town hall meetings I've been to. In many places, it's not well-known, and we've got to do a better job, I want to be very straightforward. Me and my team have to do a better job promoting this. Every middle school kid, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, gets after-school for free. It may not be in their school building, but it is in their neighborhood. And you get to have a safe place after-school for tutoring, recreation, and cultural activities. It's an incredible opportunity. There used to be cuts constantly to after-school. I believe it's one of the great things we can do for families. So for middle school kids, now free and universally available. So again, let's use an example of the councilmembers' district. Four years ago, there were 255 kids getting after-school in this district if they were middle school age. There are now almost 1,000 kids in after-school programs for free. Now, I'm going to talk about a couple of the quick things, and one is for a lot of families in this city, for 400,000 New Yorkers. The reason they can afford this place is because they're residents of our public housing buildings, one of the ones, one of the developments that's so particularly beloved in this district is Palmonock Houses. And Palmonock Houses, though, had a problem, it had a whole lot of scaffolding up there. And that scaffolding actually made it less safe, and was not a good experience for the residents. This year, we have, this is an amazing number to me, we've removed 23,000 feet of scaffolding this year alone from Palmonock Houses to open it up and make it safe and make it a better place to live. Very proud of that. We also just finished, you can clap your back. And working together, we just finished rebuilding the Palmonock playground this month. So another great thing for folks who live there. And a wonderful thing that Palmonock has distinction of being, it's going to be one of the first developments in New York City with solar power. So we're going to become a solar city. Jim Janaro likes that, he used to be the chair of the Environmental Protection Committee. This city has committed, it's very important, despite the mistake in Washington of stepping away from the Paris Agreement to address climate change, this city has doubled down in our efforts to protect the environment, to clean the air, and to address global warming. This city is going to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2050. And one of the ways we're going to do it is to put solar panels in a lot of places that don't have them now and really rely on alternative energy. So Palmonock is going to be one of the first places, so as you move around the neighborhood, you're going to see a greener neighborhood, and that's good for all of us. And one quick note for Shelton House, the tenant association there has a room that they have needed some work to improve, that needs some air conditioning. I know this has been a concern raised by the councilmember and others, we are going to put the money in to make that room good for the tenant association there at Shelton House. Now, something everyone cares about if drives or takes a bus or is on the road, which is the quality of our streets and our roads, and the fact that a lot of them need to be repaved, we have made a major, major priority, and the councilmember has been a big believer in this and the budget process, repaving our streets is both better for the quality of our life and also for our safety. If you've got a street that's in horrible shape, it's not safe to drive, it's bad for your car, it's bad for your quality of life in so many ways. We've put $1.6 billion into a long-term repaving plan. Now, what does it mean for this council district? Well, it means last year, we repaved 43 lane miles. That means one lane of the road, 43 lane miles last year. We've done another 35 lane miles in this council district just since this summer. So a lot of repaving going on, including key corridors like Horace Arden, Horace Arden, and Union Turnpike, and Parsons Boulevard. Another thing we're trying to do, the way transportation is great, more options, a whole lot of different things, we're now building to give people different ways to get around the city. And one of the things that's worked the best is select bus service. We announced a few weeks back 21 new select bus service routes that allow buses to move a lot quicker, very, very popular with people on getting to work. Five new select bus service routes will be in this council district, so there's going to be a lot more mass transit available to the people of this district. So you can get places faster. And finally, parks. We all know, and I want to say, I bet a lot of people in this room have the same experience I had, that we spent a whole lot of time in parks when our kids were growing up, and we didn't have much of a backyard, but the park nearby was our backyard, and that's where our kids spent so much of their time. We want every park to be great. I know Councilmember Lanzman has been particularly focused on a part of Fresh Meadows, Corona Park, called Willow Lake, and I'm creating an outdoor classroom there, and he has put a lot of, I want to give him credit where credit is due, we put almost $2 million into this effort, and we're going to add another $800,000 to finish it and get it done. So those are a couple of updates. I'll conclude by saying, I look forward to the discussion tonight. I always say, town hall meetings, we try and get things done, if we hear an issue, we can act on it right away, we try and act on it right away. If there's an agency you need to pay attention, we try and get them to move immediately. It is something that you want to know my view on, I'll tell it to you, even if it may not always be the most popular position, I'll try and tell you the real straightforward position. But every one of them is an opportunity for me and my team to learn and to figure out how we can serve you better. So thank you so much for this opportunity to be with you. Ready for question time? Good, good, good. So I'm going to be, I guess, moderating tonight's town hall meeting. I'm going to be calling on the questioners. Mr. Mayor, in order to make sure that we've got good representation for all the different parts of the district and variety of issues, I've got some questions or some people that we, Assemblymembers, we know have questions for you, and also feel free to raise your hands. We're going to be here for a couple of hours, so as the mayor said, I'm not completely promised that every person's going to get to ask their question, but most of you will. And those of you who don't are going to have an opportunity to speak to the commissioners. So let us get the ball rolling with, since we are here in Briarwood, is Rosalie Quinosis from the Briarwood, Friends of Briarwood Library here. Rosalie, there you go. Quinosis, good.
Hi. Thank you for coming to our community, Mayor de Blasio. I represent the Friends of the Briarwood Library and other things that are in the community as well. community as well. But one of the concerns that we have is, given that Briarwood is growing immensely as Queens is in New York, our library is fairly small. We were promised that in 2020, the beginning of construction, formation, and new library is going to begin. Now, it's just the beginning stages. I want to know what commitment is the city going to give us? When are we going to have a brand-new library built, much bigger, to meet our needs?
Thank you very much for the question. Quinones, all right. Thank you for all you do for the community, too. Look, I have been updated by my team on this issue, and bluntly, I wished I could have given you a nice, clean, easy answer, and I'm going to be real with you and say I don't have that yet. We've been talking to the Queens library system. There are some challenges. I think it is a priority, but there are some challenges trying to figure out what it's going to take and the timeline and one thing or another. So what I can at least say to you is it's on our radar screen. We're trying to come up with a real plan. We're trying to come up with a real timeline, and we're certainly going to work closely with the councilman on it. We'll take on the radar screen for now. It's a start. Once you're on the radar screen, everything goes from there. Next, the mayor mentioned Palmonak Houses, and I'd like to invite Monica Corbett, the President of Palmonak Residents Association. Ask her a question.
Good evening. So my name is Monica Corbett.
A little bit closer.
My name is Monica Corbett. I represent Palmonak Residents Association. As I sat here and listened to you read off the things that happened. As I listen to you rattle off the things that happened in Palmonak, they're kind of flawed. When our scaffolding was removed a little bit while ago, but wasn't that much that we had removed because we had windows replaced, but the one thing the scaffolds did do was illuminate our development. If you, once you leave here, like to take a tour of Palmonak, it's pitch black. We've been, I've asked you since you was a public advocate for new lighting in Palmonak. Now you're the mayor, second-term man. We need lights. We need lights bad. You could walk down the street, and you think you're in like a whole different world. It's like, it's a black hole. You walk through our neighborhood every day, and it's dark.
Okay, let me get Mike Kelly to join us. General Manager of NICA. She gets to keep her microphone in. Michael, so I'm a big, big fan of more lighting, because I think it's both about the quality of life and, again, the safety. So what is the plan to help address this issue of Palmonak?
Well, right now, as you know, there's seven lights that are out in some key areas. They're being replaced right now, and they're going to be, to have that done off by the early of next week. We're going to look at, Mayor, the opportunity to increase the luminosity. The existing fixtures right now, there's some bulbs we can actually put.
That means brighter lights.
Brighter lights.
We need, I understand what you're saying, and I don't know when the last time you've been to Palmonak, but there's 660 outdoor fixtures, and right now, the majority of them are out. When you walk through the streets and you look up at the bulkhead lights, they're out, and it's not safe. Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Jasper, who are there on a regular basis.
We'll follow up then. So you're going to take a field trip.
Yeah, you are taking a field trip together, because you're all.
No, no, he's going to take the field trip. I appreciate your offer, but he's going to take the field trip. So it's a big city, and he's the one who has to get the lights in. So, but let me give him a mandate. Michael, and I think you've been really great about follow-up. Lighting is a very particularly important issue to me with NICA. Will you go over? If you want to go over tonight, that's great. If you want to go over the next few nights, but you have to go over the next few nights and see for yourself when it's dark. And first, let's get everything that needs to be updated or replaced, et cetera, get the existing fixtures to work. But second, I'd like to hear, as we go into the budget process, if there is a particular need for any other lighting, including the temporary light. Will you bring me back? You go look for yourself and bring it back to me.
Will do, Mayor.
Okay. He will meet with you and follow up. Thank you. We're fortunate to have three business improvement districts in the 24th Council District, Sutford Boulevard, 165th Street, which we share with Councilmember Denise Miller, and Jamaica Avenue. So this question is from Aaron Schwartz or Derek Erby from the 165th Street Business Improvement District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking my question. I've been a stakeholder in the Jamaica area for close to 30 years. I'm currently the exec, on the Executive Committee of the 165th Street Bid, Jamaica Center Bid, and a member of the Jamaica Now Council. I've seen the ups and downs of the Jamaica area. According to the latest police report, during the first two weeks of November, there have been three burglaries, four robberies, 10 grand larcenies, and two grand larcenies of autos in the confines of Sector Adam, which encompasses the commercial corridor from 165th Street, Sutford Boulevard, and Jamaica Avenue in between. I really don't know what that means, if crime is up or down compared to last year of this period since the inception of the NCO program. However, I can certainly tell you that the quality of life has deteriorated considerably since the start of the program. Smoking of marijuana is out in the open. Selling of marijuana and other illegal substances has grown.
Aaron, you got to get to an inflection.
Three-card Monte can be found along the streets. Loitering is rampant. Illegal parking is uncontrollable, not to mention other regular criminal activities. After 4:00 at this time of year, when the stores should be busy, customers are avoiding the area, and store owners are vacating because there's no foot traffic.
Okay, I think I do get the point. Let's get the precinct to come up. First of all, I want to start by saying, look, I take it very seriously. We don't tolerate, I want to make sure everyone understands this, we don't tolerate quality-of-life violations. I'm a big believer in quality-of-life policing, and I do believe the neighborhood policing strategy, which comes from the historic experience of Bill Bratton and was really created specifically by Jimmy O'Neill for New York City, is about addressing quality-of-life problems, is about creating a more responsive reality in each local part of each neighborhood. And if you look at the numbers citywide, it's unquestionable, we see in all major crime categories, consistent reductions. That doesn't mean it's working perfectly everywhere. So when someone says, as you do, "Hey, I got a place where things seem to be going in the wrong direction," we need to jump on that. I want to strongly, though, say, as we turn to the inspector, I've talked to people literally all over the city, all five boroughs, about the NCO program, about neighborhood policing. The response has been overwhelmingly positive about having a personal relationship with officers and being able to share information and attack problems aggressively. But in some places, if we see a change we made that didn't work, we got to go back and look at it and figure out how to make it better. So Inspector, what are we going to do? Okay, I want to really, I want to respect you, but I also want to say, we're going to get to everyone tonight. We can't do a lot, it's going to take, I hear your core problem loud and clear. Inspector.
Thank you for that question. It's good to see you again tonight. You originally mentioned some statistics. Actually, crime on Jamaica Ave and that corridor for the city for the year is down. Since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, when you requested the cameras, immediately we followed up with that. We've already been approved, we've already done an onsite survey. You're getting 10 cameras, two on Jamaica and 165, two on 89 Avenue and 165, and then six cameras in that strip of stores. So right off the bat, we heard you, we got you 10 cameras. The NCO program, the perception is that we're 60, you mentioned 35 is the number that was typically out there, less. In reality, we use those 35 officers to realign and put them under the neighborhood policing program, the model that the city and the department has gone to. It's an effective tool. I will say this, we're monitoring the situation. I've spoken to my borough commander, he's now monitoring the situation, and the best resolution and outcome, believe me, we have you in our thoughts on that.
Let me make that a little more sharp, because I respect your good work on the PD, but sometimes there's a little bit of technical speak in there. If it's not working, we must adjust it in any given place. The overall is unquestionably working. The numbers are, couldn't be clearer. But it's like any other good idea, is sometimes it doesn't work in a certain place, or sometimes unintended consequences. If the inspector finds a pattern that is not getting the desired result, then working with the chief, the idea is move resources around to address the problem. And if it means bringing in more officers, we bring in more officers. So I want to reinterpret what you said to say, if you see things move in the wrong direction consistently, you will then change your strategy accordingly.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. 12 and Community Board 8, which we're in now, and now we're going to have a question from the chairperson of Community Board 8, Martha Taylor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make this brief. I know you're planning to move people, homeless people, out of hotels. We have a situation at the Parce Central, which is on Grand Central Service Road and Parsons Boulevard, and we simply want to know, when are you going to move the people out?
I thank you for asking.
And I have to say, there is quality-of-life problem, there are quality-of-life issues. And so it's imperative that we move them as soon as possible.
So first, I want to say, as I introduce Commissioner Banks, on any quality-of-life issues that you're identifying, it's our job, working with, you know, Department of Social Services, NYPD, to address the issue. So if there's something that's not being addressed, we want to hear about, we want to get people out there on top of it and visibly on top of it. So that's point one. But as to the timeline, let me turn to Commissioner Banks.
Great to see you again. On the first point, we will have someone follow up with you right now to see if there's any issues that are ongoing now that we've missed, so we can do a better job of any quality issues that you see from the community board's perspective. I think you know this, we have an overall plan to end the use of commercial hotels. They've been used off and on since the time of Lindsay. Over the next couple of years, we have a five-year plan to end it, but I'm happy to tell you, working directly with your councilmember, and we're working on an effort to end that one sooner rather than later. And we're going to be working very closely with him to deliver a timetable on that. Okay?
If I can, regarding the quality-of-life issues, we're aware of the location. I can't speak about ongoing investigations. We do have an ongoing investigation at the location, and we do, as you know, address the quality-of-life issues in the area. We pay attention to it all the time. There's cops out there daily, as you will. So we're paying attention to it. We are aware of it, and we'll take care of it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. We're very pleased with all our precincts. Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Alan Sherman. Let's do something in Kew Gardens Hills. Alan, where are you?
There you are.
Tell us your tie first.
You both have seen this many times. It says, "I'm from New York, but it's all about Queens." And, Mr. Mayor, before I get to my heavily traveled road, and we need left-turn lights on it. It is vital for safety. The community board, the civic association, the councilman, everybody wants it except DOT. So what I would like to request, because there's many other issues within the Kew Gardens Hills area, is that instead of DOT sending down their people whenever to check it out and find there's no problem, call the people, call the mothers with children. Let them walk with your guys to see what's going on in the community.
Let's hear from her first.
Okay, so I just talked to Nicole Garcia, Queens Borough Commissioner. We are studying, and we're going to have a determination for you in March, and happy to come take a look myself if you want.
With me.
Happy to come take a look herself. You've got a date. A lot of field trips coming out of this. Field trips, councilmember, you know, I was a councilmember, too. Field trips are a good thing. Get the commissioners in your community and then keep them captive. No way, I didn't say that out loud, did I? Okay, another very important neighborhood in the council district is the community of Elect Chester. And is Troy Walcock with us? Troy? There you go, sir. You're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm one of 1,800 Local 3 members currently out on strike against Spectrum Cable for eight months now. Since Spectrum has taken over, they've shown a pattern for disrespect for not only the New York elected official, but it seems like every state that they're going to. I know both you and the governor have spoken about your disdain for the treatment of us here in New York City, not only us, but their customers. From what I have seen so far, though, only you have actually done steps to do something to try to go after them for their bad practices so far, out of the two of you, so I wanted to thank you for that upfront. Secondly, in a Wall Street Journal article that came out recently, your office put out a request to see if any other companies would be willing to offer internet service for New York City. So my question is, have any companies yet shown interest in coming to New York City? Is New York City looking at any company in particular that they would like to service the city? And as far as us, lastly, we're some of the most highly-trained technicians in the U.S. period. Us, along with some of the displaced Time Warner staff that was here prior to Spectrum coming in, we used to have a value on customer satisfaction. If a suitable company cannot be found, will New York City be willing to take us on and be the provider for New York City, thereby solidifying working conditions, bringing extra revenue to the city, and even possibly lowering the cable bills for everyone in New York City?
Thank you for the question. That was an impressive and creative question, because I've never heard it stated like that before. I appreciate that question very much. What Charter Spectrum is doing is, at this point, you know, unacceptable and, obviously, I've spoken to them before, but I'm shocked, actually. In the beginning, I thought they were just, you know, trying to be tough and take a position, but now what they've done is made it very, very clear that I'm willing to negotiate. I spoke to the CEO directly. I told him I wanted to see him and the leadership of the union come into City Hall together and see if we could be honest brokers to get this resolved. They had never agreed to that. We have begun an audit, which will be finalized in January. The audit is to look at things like whether they are violating collective bargaining agreements, whether they are violating agreements as to work they need to do in New York City with New York City companies. There's all sorts of different factors. If we find they are in violation, it depends on the level. It can affect the future of any contracts coming up in the future. If we find very severe problems, it could actually affect their current franchise with us. I cannot predict the outcome of the audits. It has to be based on hard facts. I can say I couldn't be more unhappy with them. I don't understand why they're doing this to hard-working people, and it looks to me like union busting. And we're going to keep fighting whatever we can, but I wish I had bluntly stronger tools to deal with them. But to your point about us, we are interested in more competition going forward, for sure. We'd definitely like to hear it. There's something we can do with the workers themselves, it's a really interesting idea. So I'd like my folks to follow up with you and see if that's something we can work on together. Thank you very much. Will you follow up? Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Pasha Fizan from the Jamaica Muslim Center to ask a question.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, here. First of all, I would like to thank our great leader, our old councilman or president for attending this meeting, and I want to thank our mayor for coming here tonight to come in to our community. First of all, I'd like to thank God for giving us the opportunity to have the mayor for four more years. Please give her a hand, please. Thank you, sir. We have a vision and a beacon of hope for the minorities in our community and all over New York. Thank you, sir. My concern, sir, is the minorities. You have seen that this rise of Islamophobia and hate crime has increased, even in the city of New York. It is a concern, sir. My question to you is, what is your administration doing to thwart Islamophobia and give us security? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Look, this is a very powerful question. I was concerned today to see yet more efforts. Again, town hall meeting is not a political meeting per se, but we have to address some of the stuff that's happening around us. I'm distressed at somewhere I see coming out of the White House. I've been distressed for a while, but even just this week. And I was very struck, I was watching some of the commentary on TV, and a Republican columnist said, you know, when American leaders are insulting a faith that is adhered to by 1.6 billion people, that's unjust, that's unfair, that's bad for everyone. And so, you know, the first thing we all have to do is say, we're not going to accept any discrimination according to faith, any effort to paint an entire faith of people, one of the great religions on the earth, to paint people in negative light because of their religion. That's against everything this country is supposed to stand for. So the first thing is that we have to, as a city, I'm going to do it, I know the councilmember feels the same way, we have to stand up and say, this is unacceptable, rhetoric unacceptable, it's not our values, we're going to keep fighting it every day. But then there's action that we can take, too. And New York City, I'm very proud of New York City and this environment, because we have not changed our values one bit. So for example, on hate crimes, we're very, very aggressive on hate crimes. One of the things NYPD has done an outstanding job on is sending a message through action. If someone commits a hate crime, they will be found. And I know... And I know the history, and I've talked to the leadership quite a bit. Someone commits a hate crime overwhelmingly, they will be found, they will be prosecuted, there will be very serious consequences. We need the community always to help, this is something very important. We have a much greater chance of identifying a culprit if we have community help. But NYPD is very focused, very aggressive, doesn't take anything lightly, never minimizes a situation, takes it seriously. The other thing I want to say about New York City, who shall be proud of, is, you know, I say it in a word, no, we have 900 Muslim members in NYPD, and they protect everyone. And they are examples to the city, and they're also examples to the whole world of what's good about New York City, and good about America. Every kind of people coming together to wear that uniform, to protect every other kind of people. And that's what it's about. So, we will stand strongly to protect and to make sure that the Muslim community is safe.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we have a special question. Sam Verstandig and Ikra Mohammed, they're going to do it in a minute. Maybe. Ready? You're up. Big loud voice.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ikra Mohammed, and I am currently a student at Al Mohor School in Parsons Hobart Freshmen's.
Can I talk to you?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sam Verstandig. I live in Kew Gardens Hills, and I'm a ninth grader at Yeshiva University High School for Boys. Our question is, at the beginning of this school year, you announced a free school lunch for all program. Currently, the program doesn't offer kosher or halal options for religious students. Do you agree to change that and add halal and kosher options, so that all students really will be able to have lunch for free at school?
Thank you for the question. So, I have to come over here, because this is a great example, everything good about New York City right here. So, let's give them both a round of applause. And I want us to be proud as New Yorkers, in a lot of the world, this would be hard to imagine. But here, it's an everyday thing, and that's something we have, that we should be very proud, we should, you know, help the world to understand better. So, I also love, councilman, you love it when a coalition comes together, well, they've got a smart coalition here, common cause. Look, again, my job is to, I said in the beginning, to give people real answers. Sometimes they'll be answers you like, and sometimes it's not going to be everything you want to be. In this one, I have kind of a split decision. We costed out what it would take to do true halal and kosher meals of the same quality that we now provide as general meals in the schools. It is a prohibitive price tag, it's many tens of millions of dollars. We do not feel we can afford that in this department, particularly with the uncertainty coming out of the federal budget, which is tremendous uncertainty. And so, that's the honest truth. Is it an impossibility for the future? No, there might be a day when we can get it, but today we can't. The alternative, the sort of split decision, as I said, is, there are vegetarian meals, which leaders of both communities have said do meet the standard, that we make available to any school that wants them. So, they're available in public schools, but there are also any private religious school that wants to take advantage of them, can have them delivered as well. They're not as perfect as the hot meals, I'm not going to pretend, but they are a vegetarian option that would be acceptable, and they are free. So, that's something that is... Thank you. Good job, guys. Good job.
Now, we're going to go to a neighborhood, Parkway Village. Doug Sherman, where you at? There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you, and in particular, for the recent repeal of the Cavalier law. That really means a lot to the Danes community.
It all took 91 years.
Exactly. And for your service to our community. I serve as president of the Board of Directors for Parkway Village, and I also serve on Community Board 8. And Parkway Village has recently completed, well, we're in the process of completing close to 20 million in capital improvements to our infrastructure. And many of the residents of Parkway, we're 109 buildings comprising 675 apartments, spread over roughly 34 acres. And it's one of the greenest canopies for several miles around, in terms of Parkway Village's location. Right across the street is the T Building, and my question concerns the proposal to convert it to a supportive housing, affordable housing complex, that would be dedicated to folks with chronic health conditions, as well as people making below the average median income levels for our demographics. And so, there are concerns for safety, there are concerns for the investments in our community, and quality of life issues. So, I think my question is, what is your position on that, and what do you say to the folks who will have to coexist with this type of program, right across the street from it?
Thank you. I want to first turn to the Chief of Staff of the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, Light and Sleeper, to give the overview on the situation, and I might add a little more to that here.
Yeah, sure. So, this project, so everyone knows, is a proposed affordable housing development. That's about one-third supportive housing and two-thirds affordable housing for families making between $47,000 and $80,000 a year in income. We've been working very closely with the council member owner, commuting facility space. We think it is a good project, an important project, to bring much-needed affordable housing to this community, and we look forward to working with the council member to advance it.
Let me add to the latter part of your question, which I appreciate the way you framed it. Our job is to make sure that whenever there is affordable housing, supportive housing, any kind of housing, that we're supporting, and obviously working closely with the council member, that any quality of life concerns are addressed. And the difference today, I think this is a very important point, you know, again, I asked earlier, how many people here remember New York City 20 and 30 years ago? New York, and this, you'll see how this connects to your question. New York City 20 and 30 years ago, if you had a quality of life concern, you could call the NYPD, but the NYPD was often dealing with very serious crime issues, and had trouble focusing as much of their resources as they would like on quality of life. Today, we have a really different situation, that is changing as we speak. The crime reductions this year are absolutely extraordinary. There will be a lot more information coming out of that soon. That means more and more officer time gets freed up to address quality of life issues. And again, we have 2,000 more officers on patrol than we did two years ago. So, I say that as a bigger point to say, when we see anything where there's a change in the community, and people are concerned about quality of life, especially safety issues, we have a situation today where NYPD is much more able to be active and present to address those issues. So, what I always urge people to do, and I think what we're talking about here sounds like something that's going to be worked out very well with the community, but what I always urge people to do is, if there's ever a concern about anything, as you raise or anybody else raises, make sure you're working closely with the precinct, and they will be very, very responsive to make sure that whatever is there works for their benefit. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and let me add, if I may. We are going to have an agreement, a framework of an agreement, imminent, that takes into consideration all the concerns that Parkway Village has raised over the last few years. I remember the first town hall meeting, I went on this issue, was the year that I was running for the city council. So, this has been worked on for a long time, including by many people on the community board. I've seen Cy Schwartz here tonight from Community Board 8, and Martha Taylor as well. So, we're cautiously optimistic that very soon, we're going to have a conclusion to this process, that it is going to be respectful and with consideration of the issues that folks in Parkway Village care about, and that we're going to be proud of what gets built in, and proud of the way we went about it. So, now, let's just, let's take some raised hands, how about that? Yes, ma'am?
I was practicing the five-second move, I raised my hand and give a big bird, and it's exciting. My name is Nina Ketchum, I'm a parent and community leader in Doughty's Clean and School District 28. I wasn't expecting any big bird.
But you raised your hand.
The power of positive thinking. My son attended PS 161, District 28's best kept secret in Bridgestone Hill. He now attends this extraordinary school, my first choice middle school.
Okay, I'm going to stop you, because you're a wonderful person, I could tell, but I want to just caution everyone, too much preface.
Okay. No, I got it.
Because we got to make sure, we have so many people, so what's your concern?
My concern is diversity in education, and your view on blessing kids to strong, thriving districts. If they're in a struggling district or a struggling school, I know the city and the DOE's belief around community schools, but the reality is, if some schools are just failing, and I believe in diversity, and that that gives access and opportunity. So, what's your opinion on blessing kids from like the South Side of Jamaica, Queens, to Bel Air, to the Navy Kids, and high-quality education?
I appreciate the question very much, and it's an important one. My opinion is, there's a better way than that. And what we're trying to do now is very aggressive in terms of improving school quality. So, I don't like the status quo in our public schools today. I'm very appreciative that it's improving, you know, we have the highest graduation rate we've ever had, we have consistently improved test scores, there's very good things happening. But we're not where we need to be. And I think the way to address that is to greatly intensify our efforts and our investments to bring up each school. And I think that is both the best thing to do for kids, but also, if we want to see a more diversified school system, I believe a more consistent excellence across the system is the way to do it. I'll give you a great example. In the west side of Manhattan, there were real issues of separation between the schools, and a real quality issue difference, quality differences among the schools. And we worked very closely with the local council member and the Community Education Council to come up with a vision, that would simultaneously improve the schools that were having less success, and encourage a more diverse population in school. We found a way to do that, and it's working already, because in the end, parents make choices based on what they believe the school quality. And I always say, you know, I'm very used to the discussion in this city, I was a school board member back when we had school boards, I'm used to the discussion in a city where parents very lightly say, that's a good school, that's a bad school. That should not be possible. We shouldn't, we shouldn't allow that concept, because we should invest to the point that you don't have a bad school, quote-unquote, bad school anymore. So, the Equity and Excellence Plan aims to do that. I've seen schools that were troubled turn around in two years, three years, four years, and you can do it very quickly. And that's our goal. So, no, I would not be, I would not think about taking kids a long way away from home to try and get to a better school, I want to fix the ones we have.
Thank you. We'll just go through all the sections, and you're in there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Arvind, and I'm a student at MSD 17. And at MSD 17, in a way, that's quite an aspect of everybody's lives, right? And that changes global warming, right? And I wanted to know, how is New York City, making sure that New York City is assimilating into ways where we can reduce our carbon footprint, and we're also making sure that neighborhoods and at the local level, we're able to tell and warn people about the harms of global warming? So, how is our city moving towards a greener direction?
Thank you. Great question. Give them a round of applause. By one way, Brendan Michael found back one second, how old are you?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. You're on the right path, my friend. I have, in my family, a 20-year-old and a 22-year-old. So, they're just, just a little ahead of you. And they are so focused on this, and you're focused on it. And I think one of the things that gives me a lot of hope, I'm a big fan of the up-and-coming generation now, I think it's a very aware, focused generation. And I think there's a reason why. You can see what global warming is doing. It's not a question mark to you. In older generations, there are still some who are trying to deny the impact. If you talk to folks in their teens and twenties, there's very, very few people who think global warming is not a problem, because you're going to live with the consequences. So, it encourages me that there's so much activism and energy around it. Our job is to do very tangible things to address global warming. The retrofitting of all public buildings. So, that's something we worked on with the city council, it's fully budgeted. Every public building will be retrofitted in New York City. That's going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions a lot. We recently put out a plan to mandate that every major private building that was not meeting appropriate standards would be obligated to be retrofitted. And if they didn't retrofit in time, they would be fined in a very big way, fines in the millions if it was necessary. So, real teeth. That's going to have a huge impact on our carbon footprint. Actually, in New York City, the biggest problem is our big commercial and residential buildings. That's really where we have the biggest problem in terms of emissions. We're also trying to put, we're going to put a lot of city resources into, as I said, solar and other renewables, and more and more of city, the city government will get the energy from those sources. But something I'm really excited about is also electric cars. The city will go to an all-electric car fleet in the next few years. We're converting everything, everything new will be electric. But we're also going to put up charging stations in all five boroughs, because more and more consumers are choosing electric cars, but they're hard to use if you can't find convenient charging stations. So, we're going to put public charging stations in, we're going to pay for it, we're going to make it available to anyone. People have to pay for the electricity, just like when you go to a gas pump, but they'll be available widely all over the city. So, those are just a few, there's a lot of other things. But City of New York's in a very, very aggressive place right now. I think the best way to teach people is to show them action, to show them how much is going on. After Sandy, I strongly believe, after Sandy, there were not a lot of New Yorkers who didn't get the memo that global warming is real, we better damn well deal with it. Thank you for your question.
Rabbi Shonfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Rory. I represent the synagogue, Rabbi, I'm a major synagogue right here in Queens, Kew Gardens Hills. We, like other synagogues and, what I understand, temples and churches, have been hit with a bill we were not expecting, a tax bill. We have a nursery and a pre-K in our building, it's a for-profit nursery. It's one of the sources of income that we live off in our synagogue. We suddenly get a bill, a tax bill, with penalties for $123,000, going on that three years. It's crippling to us. We tried every avenue of appeal, we got as far as reaching the Assistant Finance Director for the city, and then we were told that you also, you're not going to be getting youth grants and other grants, because besides this thing, you also have a sidewalk violation, you have a door violation, it's like the city's like an all-frontal attack on a religious institution. And Rory has been very well, he's fought his darndest for this, but so far, we had to actually shell out $123,000. Nobody was willing to open up a door for us. We're crippled, and I wanted to know if there's any way, we're in the process of appeal, is there any way we can possibly take this up within the city government?
Well, we will definitely look at this at a senior level. I'm kind of shocked by that number, and I'm sure you're more shocked by that number, and I'm sorry you're going through that. When you started raising the question, I was hopeful it was about another piece of equation, where I think we did resolve an outstanding issue. Let's just address that for a second. What was the fire department?
I think there were some fire department charges.
Did you have that problem?
How, no outstanding charges on the property?
Right, right, no, but just, just, did the fire, stay with us, your frustration is clear and understandable. Did the fire department issue get resolved? Good, okay, so, Rome wasn't built in a day, so one step at a time. So, okay, I don't know, I don't have an easy answer, I don't think you have an easy answer. I think we need to bring this up the chain of command to Commissioner Jiha, and see if there's something that can be done here that's appropriate. I have to stay, obviously, within the law, but we want to see if we can not have an onerous situation, particularly given what you're doing to help kids. So, let me make sure, let's bring this to the commissioner, and let's see if there's anything that can be done appropriately. We'll follow up, review all the issues. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. Muhammad Waheer Rahman, member of Plaidet Budget Council, in Mayor, Plaidet Budget Council. I mentioned the one... I mentioned one time before, as the Islamophobia and all these things happening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you and congratulate all the NYPD members. They're doing excellent job. I just want to add one request, that is it possible to add some Muslim officers in the Muslim neighborhoods? So our people can get used to with, you know, more with the laws and the cultural differences, language preferences and all these things. Is it, especially 103 and 107?
So somebody separate as Chief comes up. So we want, we want every community well represented. And in our graduating classes, I speak to the graduating classes regularly, and it's fantastic what's going on. More and more residents of the city. In fact, the latest graduating classes have been increasingly majority New York City residents. People of all backgrounds, lots of different languages, more and more women officers, and there's a lot of great things happening. But in terms of how you assign people, obviously, officers have some choice in the matter, and the department has some choice in the matter. So Chief, could you explain that?
Yes. So we take a look at our personnel and naturally at the community itself. And like Queens, you are the most diverse community in the world. So it's not a problem. If you feel that you don't have the representation that you need in your community, it's a simple request of personnel. We review our staff, and if we have to move people around, we will. And if we don't have people that we can move around, the people coming, not the people, the officers coming out in the newly graduating classes will be assigned to your community. It's as simple as that. Just make your request at a precinct. You, I want everyone to understand, you don't have to wait for town hall meetings or community council meetings for concerns such as that. The precinct door is open twenty-four seven, and you have wonderful commanding officers.
Everybody knows that every month at every precinct, there is a community council where the police leadership comes and, and updates the community and is there to take questions. We have the 107th Police Precinct Community Council President, Carol Ann Foley, with us tonight. Sir. Sir. You need that mic?
My name is David Calabon. Okay. I live at eighty-two, twenty-five, one hundred and ninety, Second Street and Hall.
Sorry, you live where?
Eighty-two dash twenty-five, one hundred and ninety, Second Street and Hall, right opposite Cunningham Park.
You, you weren't at the, the Barriger that chick in town hall? Come on, be nice, he's got the microphone. Go ahead.
A year and a half. Okay, for about a year and a half, we've had people right out of our house, like three or four cars with three or four kids in their twenties that don't live there. And they are loitering, eating, drinking, and it's very scary.
Okay.
Wait, let me just, okay, it's fourth quarter there. I suggest they put aside it. About nineteen eighty-one, my kids and my wife were robbed. They couldn't, I'm not looking for another one like this. And it's getting out of hand, I'm not getting any trouble from anyone. I called the police, they don't come. I called, rolled ears up, they don't come. And I've had a scary thing in my life, lucky for everything was okay. I'm not going through that again. And it's not, it's happening to all of them. And it continues for two, two days, every, every week for about ten months. It's ironed, and no one's cooperating. I called the police, they didn't.
Okay, I hear you loud and clear. I want them, I want them to respond. So is this your precinct?
Yes, it is.
Even though he's across the council line, he's still your precinct.
Still my precinct.
So what are we doing, what are we doing here? Sir, I hear you loud and clear, but you got the precinct commander standing in front of you, and we want to see what you can do here. So go ahead.
As you said, we've been at many meetings together. We, we are aware of the situation. We go out there frequently. We do take action. We've written many summonses. Some of the issues are drag racing along the strip. Some of the issues are double parking in front of people's houses, leaving dirt behind. We've taken action on that. I know we could write a thousand summonses. If it doesn't solve the problem in front of your house, it doesn't mean anything how many summonses, how many arrests we get. So we do want to correct your issue. Have you been in touch with my community affairs officers?
Okay, 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 let's keep it cool. We're going to the chief. Chief, hold on, go ahead, chief.
You know what, sir?
Chief, sir, we hear you. Let's listen to the chief.
Sir, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling the frustration, so, yes. Sir, it's, sir. Sir.
Okay, look, if you're not gonna let him answer, we're not gonna give you an answer. So do you want us to do it or not?
I'm the borough commander, the precinct falls underneath me. I'm gonna come out, I'd like to meet with you, take a look at exactly what's going on, and I'm gonna personally make sure that it's addressed, okay? But I never told you that, sir. I'm telling you now, okay? Sound good?
Okay. Next section.
What's that? Oh, we did this section, now we're doing that section. We're gonna come around. Yes, ma'am. That's it, you won.
For the activity I see, and thank you so much for this meeting tonight. Most of the activity I see, such as this, happens on the north side of Hillside, but I'm at one forty-eight, twenty-five, eighty-ninth Avenue, where the Civil and Supreme Court are. And I see a lot of activity like this in that area. So one is my request to have some of these meetings on that side of your councilman and district.
I want to ask you, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make a good example of you. We don't do one and two. Everyone does one. I'm gonna let that one go.
Our community would like to congratulate you on your second term as the mayor of the great city of New York. Jump into the question. We have Desi Senior Center, which is located in Jamaica Muslim Center. It not only serves the Muslim community, it's open to seniors of all faiths. We've been in existence for the last four years. And I will take this opportunity to thank our council, Rory Lassman. He was very instrumental in establishing our senior center. Right now, we are open three days to serve our community. When we started, we had only fifteen members, now we have jumped to two hundred plus.
Okay, what's the punchline?
Punchline over here, Mayor, is how can you, with all, let's start off your accomplishment, how can you help us in going from three-day service to five-day service?
See, I like it's quite goal, the goal is to be a recognized, legit, five-day week. Five-day week, excuse me. But Rory, you notice he said, "In addition to my accomplishments," how could I add this? I like this guy, he's smart. Okay. So your new best friend is right here, our Commissioner for the Asian, Donna Carrato, who is very concerned about this issue. And she'll speak to it, but I want to say the methodology for achieving it, DIFTA's gotta do some work, and it's also gonna be a matter of our budget process, which is about to begin for the upcoming year. And this is also on my radar screen because it's been brought up here and in other content halls. So Commissioner, how are we gonna proceed to see if we can do this?
So we've been working very closely with your executive directors, and we're very well aware of your, your need for a five-day-a-week center and the great job that you've been doing for many years to get your center up and running. So it is a budgetary issue, it's something that we're working on at the department and with the administration, and we hope to have some news going forward.
And, and the Commissioner's been very helpful from even before she was the Commissioner on this. Ben. You got, you gotta get a mic. Are you really ninety? Are you ninety years old?
Ninety, at the beginning of January.
Give him another round of applause, that's very good. I'm, I'm coming to the answer. Your energy levels are not diminished because I've seen you now in two town hall meetings. So look, I, I want, the part of why I didn't go into more detail is because I'm still waiting to hear more back on the current state of things. You know there was a lawsuit, and you know that that?
We won the lawsuit.
I know, I'm saying.
We won it.
Do you want to let me answer?
Go ahead.
Okay, it's big of you. So, the, I want, we obviously, anything with parkland, I want to make sure that parkland is kept whole. But the, the point I was trying to make to you the other day is, our driving interest is affordable housing. We want to go back to the original plans as much as possible and focus on affordable housing, not on malls and not on these other things. I am expecting an update soon from my team on what we can actually do because there's still been a lot of aftermath since the lawsuit was determined. But my goal is to, I don't want to do what the previous administration did. I want to be very clear, I do not like their approach. I want to go back to the original intention of the City Council to have an affordable housing-focused plan. Obviously, I want to preserve parkland. I will have more to say publicly on it soon. I'm awaiting a briefing from my team. Thank you very much. And now the-
Mr. Mayor, my name is Fakur Sambhav. I have many titles, but I'm proud of serving in the local board, Community Board Eight. And welcome to the world borough and to maybe the most diverse district within New York City. I want to thank our dedicated councilmen.
Thank you, the question, brother, the question, brother.
You're in a safe zone, you're coming to this district after your election. That's what-
Yeah, I'm gonna say it the best way. If you want to give speeches, you have to get elected. But if you want to ask questions, we're ready.
Thank you so much. I just, many of the elected officials here know about this issue. We have been speaking with different elected official issues, the International Mother Language Day Monument. And you're, you've served, you've served in the Bangladeshi constituency, you know, you have a lot of Bangladeshis in your constituents. And here in this borough, we have been, you know, long been asking our elected officials, and they've all been supporting this.
I got it, I got it.
I just wanted to know.
I'll give you an answer.
How do we settle that? Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm aware of it. I understand it means a lot to a lot of people in the community. We are gonna, we're happy to have our folks from the Parks Department meet with you to see what we can do. We don't have a commitment to a specific approach yet, I want to be very straightforward. But we do understand it's important to a lot of people, so Parks Department will sit down with you and see what we can do. Thank you.
My question is simple. It's about bus lanes. They seem to be impacting the small mom and pop shops because there's no parking for anybody to go in and frequent them. Is there anything that can be done?
Great question. A little bit crazy because we're literally have the biggest population we've ever had. We have the greatest need for mass transit we've ever had. Everyone wants to get around faster and better. Those bus lanes are to allow the buses to go a lot quicker. But there's always unintended consequences to deal with. And mom and pop stores are feeling huge pressure, forget the bus lanes, from, you know, online sales and everything else. So we are always trying to figure out how we balance these needs. I think it's a very good and fair question. So Commissioner, how do you, when you build out these bus lanes, try and create fairness and opportunity for the small business?
And, and Mr. Mayor, you put it well. The challenge, of course, is we're trying now to accommodate so many users on the roadway, so many vehicles. We'll have them in some places, we won't. Some places, they'll be near the curb, some places, we'll pull them out from a parking lane. So if there are particular locations, we can always come take a look. But I think the mayor has put it fairly. It is, it is a challenge, it is a balancing act. But we can come look at particular locations.
We're waiting for you, don't worry. Go ahead.
Good evening, and good evening to all respected guests here. I'm Dr. Nita Jain, District Leader. And I'm proud to say that I'm a District Leader from Councilman Rory Lassman's district and Assembly District Twenty-Five, Part B in Queens. Without praising Mayor's one, as he said, whatever he does for our children, education and health, I'm not praising you, I'm coming to the question.
Thank you.
Not question, my request. As we all know, that we got Lunar New Year and Eve, two days holiday in our public schools in New York City. My request, and my community request, is to add Diwali as a public, as a holiday in public school in New York City. And I know your concerns about the data and all those things.
The front end around Labor Day, the back end in the last week of June. We are gonna keep looking at the option. We're not saying it's impossible, but it's not planned now. I want to be very straightforward. If you have research, give it to my colleague, and he'll share it with me. It's something we'll keep looking at. But we do not feel in fairness, we can accommodate it now because we also have to leave some buffer for snow days. And which we've seen, you know, some real use of them lately. So that's where we stand now, that's the honest truth, but we'll keep looking at it. Thank you. Thank you, no, we're not doing back and forth, thank you very much. Good. Ada, I'm gonna get to you next. But right now, I want to call someone who's got a real thorny issue in my neighborhood, Hookcrest. Bill Anello, where are you? Bill, there you go.
Hello. Geographical size, second largest in population, very close to Brooklyn, is really not well-served by the public transportation system. We have a lot of buses, we don't have as much subway service as I think we should have. And everyone knows, like, the delays in the system are horrendous. I live across the street from an F train stop in Briarwood. And it's just chronic. I mean, I understand that MTA is a state agency. You know, as a resident and a constituent, you know, I read about the bickering between yourself and the governor, and honestly, I don't really want to hear about it. So what is you as mayor, what can you do to alleviate the delays and to just keep, better maintain the system, get it done quicker?
You do want to hear about it. You do, no, I'm gonna give you my argument why you do want to hear about it. It's not about, it's not bickering in the traditional sense, actually about the substance. So let me first do a survey of the room. Ready, you get two choices. You can vote either that you believe the City of New York is responsible for the operations of the MTA and the budget and all that, or the state of New York is responsible. Which do you think is the fact today? So how many people believe the City of New York has responsibility for running the MTA? Raise your hand if you believe that. How many believe the state of New York has responsibility for running the MTA? The majority is correct. So, and here's why it matters. It's not, it's not a funny matter, it's actually a very serious matter. So the reason I have vociferously pointed out the state's responsibility is because I believe the only way the situation will change is if the state has to recognize its responsibility. I always make the analogy, I have mayoral control of education. One point one million kids, we didn't used to have that, you remember. Now we have it. If you have a problem with the school system, I am ultimately responsible. You have a problem with policing, I'm ultimately responsible. You have a problem with DOT, I'm ultimately responsible. If you can't say that about the MTA, nothing will ever get resolved. So we have to start with who's actually responsible. The governor, the state names the leadership, assigns the budget, the whole thing. That's the beginning of fixing the problem. The second thing we have to do is get a permanent large revenue source for the MTA. Their problems are based on investments that were never made, maintenance that was never done, the basics, the things, the electrical systems, the wiring, the really basic stuff. There's not enough money to do that on an ongoing basis, so something has to give. I propose what I think is the fairest solution. I honestly believe it is both the best, the fairest, the most sustainable. I believe it's the thing we can get done, which is a millionaire's tax. It would be a tax on people who were millionaires and billionaires in New York City only. So those suburban legislators could vote for it, and it wouldn't affect their constituents. You may have noticed there are a lot of millionaires and billionaires in New York City. And we estimate that the tax could give us about eight hundred million dollars a year. That would allow us to do a really big chunk of the work that needs to be done to fix the underlying realities of the MTA, and it would be permanent. I think if you could get permanent tax, that would really give them the assurance of a revenue stream. It also would allow us to do the Fair Fair, which is the half-price MetroCard for lower-income folks, and open up a lot of opportunity. So it's not, our dear friends in the media love to portray, oh, it's a feud and it's bickering. No. I have a particular vision of millionaire tax. The governor's talked about a congestion pricing vision, but has not put forward a specific plan. This is a fight you want people to have. You want, these plans have to be put forward and fought over so one of them gets chosen, and the MTA finally gets the revenue it needs. So I think we're in the process now of actually getting to an ultimate plan and ultimate solution. And then I want to hold the state accountable. I also want to say, and it really bugs me, the state took almost half a billion out of the MTA that was earmarked tax money for the MTA, and they diverted it into other things. And I have insisted that money go back. So these are fights we actually should be having to protect strap, strap handlers in the city. Commissioner, you want to add anything? Commissioner is on the MTA board, but not in the majority on the MTA board.
I will only add, and the dilemma has come up tonight. You know, you're right here in Queens, you don't have the, as good subway connections as you have in Brooklyn, for example. And obviously, a lot of people are driving, but as the population is growing, the roads are becoming more congested. So we have been turning more to trying to improve bus service. We've just done Woodhaven Boulevard, select bus service, a fifteen-mile route. But, you know, a lot of battles around that route. And as the mayor mentioned, we have five more select bus service routes we're looking at in this area. So we do hope at least within the city's control, we can help make bus service better.
Jim Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out. And Councilman Rory Lanzman for putting this great program together and everybody. I'm going to get directly to my question, all right? I'm requesting limited bus service on the Q-88 bus line. Definitely needed. It runs from Queens Village all the way to the Queens Mall. One of the major stops is my own agency, DEP, where I work for it, that I don't, my commissioner's here tonight, so I've got to be careful. But many, 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 many times, the buses are just...
Wait, I'm going to interrupt you. You're supposed to say, because I want to get to work first in the morning, because I'm so excited to get to work. Serving such a great commissioner, right?
True.
Okay? I'm helping you out here.
But seriously, in our community, we have the largest, one of the largest public schools, high schools, Francis Lewis High School. We've got the largest Catholic high school, St. Francis Prep. St. John's University.
Now, this is not, forgive my ignorance, this is not SBS, right?
No, it's limited bus.
So this is private MTA.
I requested it over a year ago, I think got rejected, so I'm re-requesting it. Anytime it just passes up the second bus stop, many DPOs...
I got you. My point is this, again, on SBS, at least, we put some of the money in, so we have some control. On traditional bus routes, that's the MTA problem again. Go ahead.
But we can certainly, I'll come, I'll come talk to you afterwards. I mean, we certainly talk to the MTA and sometimes when we see important routes and we hear requests from constituents, we, we try and make the case with them. So happy to do that.
Great, we appreciate it. Thank you again.
Here's the funny thing. What's really on his mind is the status of the Brinkley Hall Cemetery. Clearly. A lost opportunity. I think it'll come up anyway.
It just did.
Okay. You, you put it into play. You cleverly put it into play. Nicely done.
Well, if you, if you look behind the curtain, it's not so clever.
Okay. We're changing, we're going to talk about the cemetery. Go ahead, Dottie.
That's a very important topic, Mr. Mayor. Hi, I'm Dottie Lewandowski, Queens Parks Commissioner. Councilmember Lanzman and the borough president have allocated funding which will allow us to acquire property. It's privately owned. We are going to acquire it, we're in the process. There's a uniform land use process that needs to be reviewed. The application is just about to go in. Once that goes through, it's processed very quickly. DCAST can then negotiate a price with the owner and we can purchase.
Okay. Good news story, thank you. Very good. This section.
Ma'am. Good evening. I am a guidance counselor at a large public school, this large public school. We serve, we serve, as many city schools do, a significant population of students in temporary housing who already face myriad obstacles to their educational success. The shelter system is not designed to support these children's learning. I want to know what the city can do in terms of providing these students better opportunities, whether it's through internet access in all sites that are housing families, whether it's through ensuring that families are relocated to shelters when needed within their communities so that children can remain. The system right now is dysfunctional and it is not supporting children who have already come up against unimaginable realities.
Amen. First of all, thank you for what you do for a living. It is incredibly important to our kids, so thank you very much. Second, everything you said I agree with. It's not an acceptable state of affairs. The painful reality is, and this is sort of the bigger discussion we need to have in the city about what's happened with homelessness. It is, you know, Steve Banks, our commissioner, has been working on this issue for over 30 years. When he started, it was very much about single men with mental health problems or substance abuse problems. Today, it is about families with none of those problems or in economic distress because of the cost of housing, because wages are too low, who end up in shelter. And you're right, never in a million years anyone would think you'd have a lot of families, including working families, in shelter. Steve's going to talk about the measures being taken in shelter. And Phil Weinberg, our Deputy Chancellor for DOE, they'll talk about the specific actions in the shelter to try and address education. And Phil, please, when you speak to it, I don't, I don't know the answer on this point about using just remote learning or internet learning to help kids in the shelters. I want you to speak to that. But I do want to say, I announced a policy at the beginning of the year that we're reorienting the entire shelter system. The shelter system, it finally dawned on us, and I've said very publicly, I wish I had figured this out sooner. The shelter system would take in a family, you go into a shelter intake facility in the Bronx, they say, we're going to put you in Brooklyn. And you're totally disconnected from your school, your house of worship, your family, whatever. We finally, I've got to be honest, we looked at all the pieces and said, wait a minute, we're missing the most obvious thing in the world. Reorient the entire system so that when you, God forbid, you go into shelter, first, there's a guarantee that you stay in your own borough. And then, we try and get you as close to your home neighborhood as possible. And that has a second, very powerful impact. Communities are much more accepting of people in shelter if they're actually from their own community and they understand the famous phrase, there but for the grace of God go I, it could be any one of us. But that then allows us to make sure kids can go to their home school or at least get there a lot more easily. So that is the entire new philosophy, it's literally being implemented now. The system's being reworked to keep people closer to home. And I think that's going to be helpful. Speak to what we do in the shelters.
Okay, so just to, to give you the steps that we're taking to implement the mayor's vision. It's a system that's been very haphazard. And in just about 10 months, we've gotten up eight new facilities, eight new shelters, specifically to carry out this vision the mayor laid out of borough-based, connected to communities, connected to the anchors of your life. So for example, we opened the first traditional shelter in Crown Heights, giving families for the first time an opportunity to be able to be sheltered in their communities so they can keep their kids in the school where their children were going to school. We just opened the first facility up in Riverdale in that community board, giving those children a chance to continue to go to the school they're in. I mean, first of all, we should, we both focus on this. Prevention of homelessness is our first key priority. But when we are unable to prevent homelessness and we've put incredible amounts of resources to keep people in their homes, when people come into shelter, this is the vision. And it's starting to happen. We're remaking a system that's almost 40 years old. Different reality for the children in that Crown Heights facility, different reality for the, up in the Bronx than the kids you're talking about. But slowly but surely, we're going to transform the system that goes back many, many years to make it work right. And let's start with just acknowledging, yes, there couldn't be anything more difficult than working with young people who don't have stability at home. The DOE has done a good deal though to make sure social-emotional learning and the counseling necessary is more widely available in schools. And you just touched on a very interesting point. We're experimenting in some of our community schools, providing devices and access to young people who are in shelters so they're not disrupted as they, as they go to a place where everyone else in their school can get online and make sure they know what the homework is. We can't guarantee that we can provide that for everyone right now, but it is something we've begun to do already. So thank you for raising that.
And I would just say, it's a question of, we need some additional resource. That's a very important item for the budget process coming up. If, because just something I know for my own kids, I, you know, we used to know our homework when we left school because we'd read it on the board or whatever. But, you know, I know for my own kids, if you don't go online later, they never know who their homework is, what their homework is. So we've got to make sure there's some access in each shelter to keep kids on pace with their education. Let's see how we can do that. Thank you, very, great question, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
It's you. We have, this is, this is not consistent with your interests, but I want to state it as a premise of our answer. We have greatly invested in legal aid and legal services because of the specific things we're trying to achieve. Because we're trying to prevent homelessness, prevent evictions, I mean, a whole host of things. I don't think that is a system or an idea that's against any other type of legal activity. I think it's about what we're trying to achieve strategically. But I have never understood, honestly, an 18B where we begin and we end, and the state begins and the state ends and all that. So Steve, you're going to be my lifeline here. If the concern is that there's a lot of up-and-coming young lawyers who want to participate in that, what, what is your best answer of how we can work with it? Right, but they, they want work through it.
Right.
Of the city, from you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, at least a three-year moratorium on increase in real estate taxes. My taxes in the last four years have gone up $1,800 or over 20%. That is because every year, the house is being reevaluated. And it's based on the higher valuation, not the previous. So really, the law states you can only raise it over a certain period of time.
I got it, I got it.
You know what it is.
I get asked this in every town hall meeting, don't worry, it's not a new topic to me.
Well, I'm not saying it is, Mr. Mayor, but when you gave your November financial plan update recently, you had indicated...
Someone's done his research.
Yeah, it does, you know. Forty years on the community board. You said that you projected between 2018, 2021, an increase in general property tax of about 16%.
No, I want to be clear there, hold on, hold on. I admire your research, but I think there's an assumption there that's not accurate. Let me, let me, no, I want to answer the question, it's a crucial question, it's on everyone's mind. First, where you began the tax plan, which I think is exactly the right place to begin. We are, I'm working with mayors all over the country, I'm working very closely with Senator Schumer and everyone that's, and by the way, I want to say, it's a bipartisan effort. Congressman Donovan has been a champion on this issue too. The tax bill as written is, it's very simple. It's a huge giveaway to wealthy people and corporations, but it's particularly unfair to cities like New York and states like New York, in many ways. And it will create a double taxation reality. If it's not stopped or it's not modified, it will mean, functionally speaking, people's taxes will go up. Middle-class people, working-class people's taxes will go up. Job one is to fight it. And there's still a real opportunity to fight it or at least substantially modify it. So I want to not, I don't want to do the hypothetical of what do we lose? Because right now, we're fighting and, and everyone, I've spoken to Schumer, I've spoken to Pelosi, everyone believes this thing can still be stopped or changed in a big way. But to your underlying question, which is very fair, what are we doing about the property tax levels? A lot of people are hurting with it, I know. First, and I think it's really important, separate the rate from the assessment. On the rate, I've said very clearly, four years running, and the council's been there with me the whole time. No increase in the rate for four years, no increase in the rate projected. There were increases in the rate in the previous administration, there were also some economic crises, I understand that. We, looking forward as far as we can see, do have no intention to increase the rate. In fact, with the council's support, we have put very substantial reserves in place to help guard against any kind of situation that would hurt our revenue, so we've never had to think about an increase in the rate. But the bigger challenge is the assessment question. It's really hitting some communities very hard, it's very uneven, it's very unfair, it's very inconsistent, it's very untransparent. What I've said I will do, and I'll be announcing this in the not-too-distant future, is put together a initiative to overhaul the entire property taxes. And I've been very honest, I'll say it to you too. When the smoke clears, when we recut the whole property tax system to try and make it more fair and consistent, we cannot lose a huge amount of revenue in the bargain. Because you want the police to be able to do what they're doing, you want more, I believe, most people want more officers on the street, they want the schools to do better, they want all the stuff that we pay for. So I need to be, if not revenue-neutral, I need to be as close to it as I can be. But I still think we can make it a lot more fair, especially across boroughs and neighborhoods. The only way that works is, in my opinion, I got to put together a new plan. And then, it's got to go to the state legislature and to the city council. It's a huge endeavor, but that's how we fix it for the long term. That's the plan. Yes, ma'am?
That, I'm going to address what that lady said from the school. I'm in a shelter and you should see the standards that I'm living with, my three children. It disgustes me and makes me want to go back to what I left. And I would like to know, how can you address that, sir?
Now, let's see, if you can, which, which shelter is it, ma'am?
I am living at the shelter on a person's.
Okay. Steve, what can we say about what we can do to, to try and fix the situation she's facing?
We have staff here tonight, we're going to sit down with you, we'll hear what your concerns are, and we will address all the concerns that we get. We work very closely with the council member, and if there's something we can do together, or if we can do it ourselves, we will do it for you tonight. I'm sorry to have that.
Thank you very much.
Great idea, as we desperately need more community space. And we would like to know, Mr. Mayor, if you support this proposal.
You're going to be very happy very soon. You know, so, ma'am, you're going to be very happy very soon.
I would like to have your permission, Mr. Mayor, first of all, to just continue the answer about global warming, if I may. I already, absorb rainwater, prevent flooding in streets, and also sewer backups. Now for the problem. Close to a year ago, I was a victim of a hit-and-run in 70...
I don't find it acceptable, ever, for a New York City resident to be told they're a low priority. That's absolutely unacceptable, that does not reflect the views of this administration or this NYPD. So when something like that happens, we want to know about it because that may be an officer who needs some retraining. And certainly, the higher-ups will follow up on that, but also want to get back to trying to address the case, because you're exactly right. If that would lead them to a dangerous driver, that could protect other people's lives. So I want to apologize, you never should have had that experience. Inspector, what do you know about this case and what can we do to address it?
This is the first I hear about this case, but like the mayor said, that's completely unacceptable for a detective to make that statement. I'll meet with you afterwards, I'll look at, I'll look into it and I'll get back to you with, with the result. But the detective, that's, absolutely doesn't meet our standards.
Thank you very much. And I, I went to the wake and was with the family there, and I can feel it very personally now. It's the first time in 25 years anything like that happened. But it's still incredibly sobering. The issue to us now is to make it easier for parents and for students to report bullying and to get a guarantee that when they report bullying, there is an immediate follow-up by the school. So we've just started an online system, it was announced, I think, three weeks ago, that allows anybody anywhere in the city to report and then get a report back on what follow-up was done. We want, excuse me, all school staff to understand to never underestimate bullying, to never sweep it under the rug or think it's not a problem, we take it very, very seriously. And we've added a lot of restorative justice programs in the school, and Phil, jump in here. Because we have found that even when you see instances of bullying, rather than just letting them exacerbate, we can actually do interventions, peer counseling, and a bunch of other things that actually help to reduce the problem and address the problem. Right, so behavioral issues too.
And Mrs. Baliger, you remember, last danger before you see the New York on, and you guys have, you know, talked to my everybody, help my family, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yannif.
Thank you, Councilmember Rory Lanzman, for all that you do, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for joining us.
Adding a lot more to our nonprofit funding because, in a lot of ways, it was insufficient for the work we were asking nonprofits to do. If what you're saying is you're a nonprofit that has not yet been able to tap into city funding opportunities, we want to help you do that. And just give me the category of programming, give me the category of program.
Primary youth.
Primary youth. So our commissioner, Bill Chong, is here, and he will follow up with you about ways that we can work with it.
That'd be great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for our community. Assalamualaikum to everyone. And, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your glorious second term.
Thank you. Now, no more preface, we want to hear your issue.
It hasn't started yet, so I don't know if it's glorious.
There are...
Hey, wait a minute, it's going to be glorious.
We're optimistic.
We're already here for four years, we are happy, very happy.
I like the way you think.
Yes. Anyway, there are many homebound Muslim seniors in my community. And I'm a community activist, working as a director for the senior center at the Wicca Muslim Center. To know my community and I know these homebound Muslim seniors, they don't get any home-delivered food because there are no halal home-delivered food.
Okay.
So would you please do something to ensure them that they get halal homebound food?
So, I just want to start by saying, it's obviously a variation on the issue we have with schools. I know with the schools, that the only option we have is the vegetarian meals. But talk to me, Donna and everyone, about halal meals with seniors.
So we, 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 we know of the issue. And we're actually looking into revamping our whole home-delivered meals process to include more options and more choices. So we're aware of it, it's a limitation right now. And there are some senior centers that do vegetarian meals. And we've, and have outside caterers that do halal meals. So we'll work through this. But if there's a need, you, I'll see you and talk to you about it.
Donna, thank you so much. Is Elke Mayor's here? Elke, did you, did you leave?
They, they should be every, like, semi-annual, some kind of, like, classes to give it to the renters, how to take care of the quality of life and keep the apartments clean. Because that's another thing that the landlords doesn't give the apartments, and that's kind of creating a lot of hysteria. There's like thousands of IC watchers, people contacting us for that.
Okay, I think that's a great point. To me, this issue has come up in different ways, I agree with this one thoroughly. Whether it's Section 8 or FEPs or any other subsidy programs, to make it more usable to often the smaller landlords make... to often the smaller landlords, many cases we're working with, who are trying to work with the city, trying to help provide affordable housing, but sometimes have to jump through too many bureaucratic hoops or don't get their payments on a timely basis, et cetera. I see, and Commissioner knows this, I see these folks as crucial allies in the work we do, and we want the experience to be a positive one. I think training, it's an interesting point, training landlords and their employees about how best to complete inspections and paperwork and get their payments on a regular basis is a great idea, what can we say to this?
I, I do too think it's a great idea, these town halls give us a lot of input. We want to hear from you right afterwards, and I think we're gonna come forward with some new initiatives for landlords, along with what the mayor just said, in terms of creating an opportunity so people don't get tripped up over paperwork and stuff like that.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are so pleased and happy to see you, you have your arm out for next year.
What's your question, Mr. Mayor?
My question is, as you know, we're trying to keep our youth from the street. And as you know, youth is a big issue in the city. Jamaika Muslim Center trying to keep our youth from the street, and have a program going on Jamaika Muslim Centers. We're trying to do every day after school, so if anywhere Mayor Ruff is to be able to help us on the financial side, we have a limited source, we need your help.
Thank you, I got you, I appreciate it. We, I'm a big believer in youth programs, after-school programs. It's something we certainly want to do with the Muslim community as well. Bill Chong will follow up right there, our commissioner will follow up with you directly afterwards. Thank you. Breitling.
What programs are, you know, whether there are more programs...
Say it plainly there, so I think that's the core question, I assume. I think there's a question of demand, we're open to it, right?
There has been a growth in dual-language program.
Closer.
Growth in dual-language.
How does something go down and go back up, what would you say?
A lot of it is dictated by state law formulas. What I could do is go over your particular situation and clarify how it worked, as the mayor's...
But increase, that you have answered the question. But my basic question is, I live on 169th Street, and this neighborhood, entire neighborhood on that 69th, they need to see a speed bump on those, on 169th, because the traffic is always driving 50 to 60 miles an hour.
Six, you said 69?
Yeah, 169th Street.
169th, okay, you guys got it?
And also, also...
We almost had a crash.
It's so dangerous to pull out from the driveway, and you have to pay very much attention to it.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have an answer, or are you gonna do a follow-up?
We'll, we'll come take a look on that.
Okay, we're gonna follow up, and thank you, everyone, appreciate you being here, very much. Thank you, then.
Yeah, okay. It was a great event tonight with the town hall meeting. My question, which I was asked to the mayor, was about Islamophobia, the right of Islamophobia and hatred in New York City, especially. And he answered it very well, that he is concerned about the Muslim community in New York, and he said he's gonna take measures and to see those, you know, another happen in New York City, which happens, and he's gonna take legal action against those. So it was really very beneficial for all of the Khan community, and especially for the Muslim community as well. Thank you.
Welcome, good evening. Today was the town hall meeting with our building class here, boosted by our councilman Rory Lantman. It's wonderful, it's very, came very close to people to ask questions, and we really congratulate Mayor on his second term. We were the mayor of New York City. My question was today to him, who actually was request to our mayor to add more Muslim police officers to our neighborhood precincts, especially 107, 103 precincts and other areas where more Muslims live. So he really took it seriously, he already instructed his staff to take a look on it, and then he assured that there are more graduate police officers coming, and they'll try to put much more in those precincts, our areas. So we really appreciate the mayor's wonderful work he's doing, and we are hoping he's doing much more. And then especially the halal food he tried, he said there is, there's a difficulty to achieve that. But Eid holiday is a wonderful thing, we, Muslim, we've got two days in a year. Thank you so much.
Yes, Assalamualaikum. Happy to be here tonight with Mayor, our councilman Rory Lantman. We had a great, successful meeting tonight. We had a nice conversation about communities, how people of our community have been to our senior center, Jamaika Muslim Center, how can they support our youth program. We had a great, nice conversation with Mayor. Hopefully, it's gonna help our community. Also, I like to thank ITV, they are recording our program, so special thank you, so much.